Shows what these discussions are.
It gives me cells everything it wants. Is it time?
I think it's.
That's what it sounded like when I listened to it. So, part of last week's meeting I got and part of it was someone's playing the piano.
So what you're politely saying is that all the tech that you worked.
Didn't want to.
Yes.
No volume Jeff, if you can hear me.
It's not even called.
Do that all motion? Thirty second meeting.
Hello Matt, anybody?
There you go, we can hear you now, thanks guys.
Alright, we're gonna get started. It's a little past start time, a little past sun. But we did have a forum, we have all zoning board members present. So is there any discussion or motion for approval of the agenda and minutes from last week's meeting?
I can motion approval on the agenda and minutes.
A little second.
All those in favor of approval of the agenda and minutes signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, so the agenda today is really just a continuation of our conversation from last week going through the draft. And before we get started, I want to let everybody know, I did make some updates to that ordinance. I turned on track changes, I will post that document. To this. This is not a full copy that I'm handing you, this is a copy of just the pages that have as we need to. Now, one thing that we did discuss last week that was asked for changes was it said 50 dB and then shall mean 40 dB, it was in the definitions.
Yep.
So I made that change, I just took the numbers out. So it just talks about DBA and DBC, what those mean.
Okay.
There was also a suggestion that we add shadow flicker as a definition, which I did, you can see on the second page of what I've handed you. I also added a setback definition and a definition called manufacturer safety distances. You can see that on the first page. I added that manufacturer safety distance definition. Part of our conversation last week was that setbacks, physical setbacks are really all about safety. And so by introducing a definition of manufacturer safety distances and defining what that is, we can leverage that term now when we talk about setbacks. And so if you look at table one, which would be the third page of what I handed out to you, you can see the changes that I made there along with the changes to the text. Now, I, we originally had 1,000 feet or 3.75 times the total height. And so what I did is I changed that to 1,600 feet because we do have record from one of the wind turbine manufacturers for a 500 foot class turbine. They're recommending that 1,625 feet in the event of fire and things of that nature. So I changed the basic property lines to be the greater of 1,600 feet or 3.75 times the total height or the manufacturer safety distances and you can see that.
And that spec that 16, I don't know, 1680 but 16 is running towards the wind, talking 2,000.
Right, and that's one of the things that we still need to yeah, we need to discuss and come to a consensus so we can keep moving through this. So what do we want the physical distance to be? That it's the 3.75 times or the manufacturer safety distance.
Can I pause a second and ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. If there is an ordinance that we put into place that is you know that they can still get a variance from the board of adjust.
Yeah, so the way that I've written it, they can get waivers on distance, they can get waivers on shadow flicker, they can get waivers on sound.
Okay.
And then part of that waiver process is they have to go to the board of adjustment with a copy of the agreement from the landowner that's granting the waiver, a record of the fact that that easement of effects has been filed with the recorder's office. And then they go to the board of adjustment to request a variance.
Yeah, so if we said it, I'm gonna say it, too strict. In essence, you as long as you go to the person that's affecting it and either one you're paying them with.
This thing says unused again.
And when we discussed it that day, I thought you said it was gonna be an addition of them or whatever came out. The, this, this, or a maximum of them added together. I don't, I didn't read that here.
Well, if so, if you look at page 13, so look at the, yeah, and down towards the bottom. This is adjacent property lines, the greater of 1,600 feet, et cetera, et cetera. And so I
But this is the greater of the three, not any kind of an addition of the three.
Correct.
Okay, that's where I again personally feel that our 1,000, 1,500, 2,000, half mile, whatever, our safety buffer to me should be in addition to tower height. So if they put in 300 foot towers, 1,500 feet plus the tower.
Well, this, this gets us, the 3.75 times the total height. That was based on a 400 foot turbine being, having a 1,500 foot setback. So a 500 foot turbine is gonna be greater.
Depends on our multiplication factor, if we stick to the 3.75.
Right, right, so I guess.
What I'm saying, you get down to a 200 foot tower, like your example with the crop dusters. It doesn't matter if it's a 200 foot tower, 1,000 foot tower, they still need 2,000 feet. And I safety buffer of property lines or whatever besides the height setback. So to me, if this added them together, that's different than the greater of one of the three.
But I don't think it would work if we're adding 2,000 feet distance plus some multiplier of the total height.
I'm trying to get my calculator.
Because that's gonna get us way, way out there.
So just in experience, past experience, those crop dusters won't even go remotely in there. They'll stay on the south edge, the north edge, the outside skirt, they are not gonna do this. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if it's 3,000 feet, they're not gonna fly in there, they've already said they're done with that. Just because all of a sudden they look up and there's one sitting there and too late.
Right, right.
Um, you know, that's talking with them, or just past experience, that's, they won't do it. Um, so I think.
Yeah, and he was telling me that Pioneer Seed, they've got a policy that they won't do anything inside the wind farm area.
Exactly, yep.
Because of that.
Yep, it's all ground.
Because they, yeah, they have to, they have to crop dust because of the time limits.
Yep, yep.
You know, how often have you used a crop duster in the last five years?
I did once and then I went to ground, did everything on the ground, yep.
I mean.
Sometimes it was a luxury ground, that's why they were here in the first place.
Yeah, that's the reason why, but it's not up.
But in all honesty, it's, this has nothing to do with this, it's a lot more, you get a lot better response from ground versus aerial.
Yeah.
You get a product.
Yeah.
A couple, so again, I was going, a couple of things, from what I gathered, you guys are discussed. You're gonna go property lines versus building sets.
Right. And the reason that is, I can draw you a picture. So you've got one person's property here, another person's property here. If, and let's say the house is here and a turbine is here.
Right.
Well, you might have the distance setback here, you know, if you, if you draw, we'll say 1,600 feet, just for the sake of argument. The house may be clear, but now you've essentially taken, if this is a safety zone that you don't want buildings and people and things of that nature in, then by ordinance affect the core by, and then say, hey, that
Like you said, the Invenergy originally said 2,000 feet. I don't care if you, I don't wanna say this.
But, yeah, they said 2,000 feet wasn't to the property line, that was 2,000 feet from a dwelling.
Could be, but we've also determined that property is your dwelling, whether it's your house or not.
Yeah, I wanna propose something here. First of all, we, we have to recognize, we get where we have the whole thing in a draft form that we're comfortable enough to present to all the stakeholders, let them look at it, feedback in a public hearing. And then we get that feedback and we can make additional changes. Then we put our recommendation on it and give it to the supervisors.
But that's exactly what I'm saying.
Let me finish it, so, you know, we outside of the supervisor's time last week, all of last week's meeting.
I'd like to
Well, yeah, what I'd like to say is, are, just not necessarily a vote, but just a consensus, are we comfortable with this concept of whichever is larger?
Mill, in this case, it'd either be 1,600 foot or the manufacturers are unknown number that we don't know. And I'm trying to establish a minimum footage.
Yeah, 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 we're, I'm not, we, we're gonna get to the distance, I'm just trying to find out if it's the concept of having these three potential distances, whichever distance is larger, that we're okay with that kind of a concept.
See, and that's where I'm having trouble with that, okay, my answer is no, I'm not comfortable with that. Because I would, in addition to this is gonna be called around a week, no, no. Okay. Only two things that we have and will
Right.
Of, in addition to.
But that's not
You'd end up at 1,600 plus another 2,000, so you're
Right, grammatically, what you're asking for.
I would rather have the distance down to 1.5 the tower and get our guaranteed minimum feet.
But what, what you're asking for is what the language says, right? If we, we can't say this is in addition to because as Dana points out, plus you gotta calculate the total height, we're gonna add that to the 1,600 feet or the 2,000 or whatever. But it's I don't think that, you're not asking for those two numbers to be added together. You're asking for a distance. And if the total height times the multiplier is farther than that distance, you want that farther number, right? If the manufacturer's safety distance is somewhere, right?
It's still work out.
Yes, yeah, so I just wanted to
We don't have that number yet, you're just
Exactly, I just wanna make sure.
I get it, I'm stuck on that, it's such a huge issue.
So if I put up a 200 foot mill, 150 feet. And, okay, no big deal, right? Well, 1,600 feet because that's our minimum.
Right.
That's the number we use, that's the number we use is 1,600. You put up a 600 foot mill, what's 3.75 times?
1,900 feet.
And then the manufacturer says, well, for this, maybe you need, you need 2,200 feet for safety.
Right.
You just turn that baby up to 2,200 feet.
Right, right.
So they have the opportunity to choose a safer mill that goes up on top, whether that's safer or not.
Smaller or safer or
Or it's being, or the manufacturer giving us BS, but, yeah.
So, so we're okay with the concept.
Yes.
Alright, so the next thing that I, I wanna try to pin down so that we can keep moving is our minimum distance. And we'll get to the multiplier here as well.
Correct.
So the minimum distance right now on the paper says 1,600 feet. And, you know, outside of Madison County, I think Cosus County had 1,600 feet, I think everybody else is, is smaller than that. And again, we're talking property lines, not homes. What number do you want? What number do you want?
And I know there's a multiplier. Are we, are we six? 400, 300, 500?
Proposing
Or anything.
It was based on the safety, that's right. It was based on a manufacturer's safety zone for a 500 foot class. Right.
What two of them on 240 acres?
I have the answer to that.
Because he's answered that. If we have this in writing beforehand, the board of adjustments don't have to worry about it. It comes down to, for example, Invenergy and the participating and not participating landowners that that tower affects. And they have to have that ironed out. Then they simply come to you and go, we have all agreed on, can you give us the variance?
But every single, if you make it so restrictive, then everybody had, then everyone, so it's a public here for each and every site. And you could get really drawn out with that. And I'm, you know, I'm just bringing you from the, you know, because it's, it's one of the things the board has to put in front. But a lot of that's because they don't have anything in writing. There's nothing to start from. Oh, yeah. I'm playing at the 15, 1600 feet. I'm kind of, and, and here's my quick math. Quarter mile is 1320. Quarter mile is not far enough. Half mile is too far. I mean, I'm just
I was there too last week.
You know, I'm just, to me, the Invenergy said the 2,000, 2,000 in the beginning. Okay, you want to go 2,000 away from a house? Because you're going to have that situation when a guy is 1,500 to the the property line and it's 16 to my house. So I, there's, there's things that you can argue about that too. Is 1,500 too close? If, if there's such, if it might be too close to a house.
Too close in what respect?
And, but the decimals probably, it's, it's the
Exactly. That's why I make that point here. I want to, I want to make certain that we're, we're going to address sound separately with criteria. We're going to address flicker separately with criteria. The distance setback is really focused on
Just the safety of this.
On our cemetery board too. You don't make money in the cemetery.
What's the next issue that anybody had with our language?
Okay, so I gotta try and still on that page 14, the public recreation area, half a mile. And public conservation area of, we've got it changed to one mile.
Right, that was based on last week's conversation.
Okay.
Taking it up to one mile for conservation area.
Right, okay. I think I remember that now. Originally, I thought the talk was two miles for the campground type areas and then one ground for conservation.
I don't remember on the public right of way, public road right of way, where if that thing falls, it's going to make sure it falls, you know, on the property, not in the road which, right?
That's the reason it's saying 110.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha. Yep, just want to make sure.
Yeah, it, it's
And the right of way
It should be the right of way to the fence line.
Not it. Yes. Yep, I agree. Good point. I agree.
And I, I've looked and I can't find a good definition of fall zone. And if there's a different multiplier to use, 110% is what a whole bunch of these ordinances we're using.
Yeah, and it's, nothing may fall apart and it'll all be neatly within that and nothing bounces, but
Different than chucking a blade.
Yeah. Usually they chuck the blade and then they tip over.
So what was the next thing somebody, anybody had?
Are you leaving the eagle, the eagles at three miles? Is that what you're doing?
Last week we talked that we was going to give them nothing.
What, the eagles?
Yeah, because most of the eagles nests are already, this is me and Jimmy talking. He said like a half a mile, but he also said that most of the eagles nests are already within the Uh, he said like a half a mile, but he also said that most of the eagles nests are already within the conservation wildlife areas. Also, I talked to him again to try to get a.
I know of three of them out here that are nowhere near.
Not even close. They're everywhere in the county. We would not be able to have one. Eagles are everywhere.
Well, they're they're and they're no longer an endangered species.
Right.
No, but there is a, I think we need to say something about eagles. There's a federal law called the um, the the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act or something of that nature.
Yes.
Um, that says that if you if you do something that could potentially take an eagle or harm their habitat, you're required to get an incidental take permit from U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah, that's if you need to take one.
No, no, if you may take one, if by virtue of what you're doing might result in it, like you put a turbine up within half a mile of the eagle's nest and they're flying back and forth to feed their babies. There's a good problem, not a probability, just a good possibility. You could kill it, they're required incidental eagle take permit.
Okay, I and then I haven't read what you're talking about. But I do know that if you have a kill, there's an incidental report, just to report that there was. Go.
Need to have something.
More. Have an eagle in my thoughts.
Around those turbines, they're there all the time. They're always around.
So how small can we make that? Is that what I'm hearing? Half mile, quarter mile?
I mean, I've seen them directly under the turbine before.
I found this and I, because I was looking at this. Okay, this is just a graph of the kills. That's what the birds that get killed by cats. Building windows automobiles. If they paint one of the blades black, it drops the.
That's interesting.
That's over here. That was a Danish study, but I think there's things that.
Yeah, that's that's up to them if D and R.
Now.
It looks like your already has reduced that from five to three.
D and R. First law wins. Hard. And in the at three out of that five miles was way too much.